Good evening and welcome to the thirty second meeting of fiscal year 2022 for the Milton Planning Board. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce our board. My name is Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And I would like to introduce Maggie Olfield.
I'm a Maggie Olfield member.
Cheryl Togias.
Cheryl Togias, Member and Secretary.
Sean.
Sean Fahey, Member.
And our staff, Tim.
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Julia.
Julia Getman-Clark.
Great, thank you. We can call the meeting to order. First, we'll begin with administrative items. The next scheduled meeting for the Planning Board is June 23rd and July 14th.
So Meredith, I just wanted, oh, sorry, I just want to fill you in on town meeting for next week. We had a little bit of a miscommunication in the office this week. We weren't able to get an agenda up for a pre-town meeting meeting on Monday. But we do have the Council on Aging booked. So in lieu of being at the high school or being in a remote setting, the Planning Board can absolutely meet together at 7:30 for town meeting. This is a, maybe everyone knows, but it's a sort of little-known, little remarked upon quirk of the open meeting law that it just doesn't apply to town meeting. So you guys can meet, you're all set. So if you're called upon at town meeting to discuss anything by either the War Committee or the moderator, whoever to answer a question, you could all be together doing that. That's totally fine. And we will get you posted for a pre-town meeting meeting on Tuesday. Because I know you guys were interested in doing that and talking about the zoning article. So apologies for that. I don't think that we'll get to the zoning article on Monday. So I think you should be in the clear. But again, you are, regardless of whether anything's posted, you guys are absolutely able to meet together for town meeting. So there's no, there's no issue with that. And we'll make sure that we've got you for a 6:30 meeting at the Council on Aging for Tuesday evening.
Okay, the Council on Aging has been booked for 6:30 on Monday.
Yeah, yeah, Julia, what I'm saying is that, so the board's not posted for a meeting, but they can meet during town meeting without, without being posted. That's definitely acceptable. But we will have you posted for Tuesday, so you can meet at 6:30 and discuss whatever we want to put on the agenda.
Can I just mention, Meredith, I am isolating. I'm COVID positive.
Oh, Cheryl, I didn't want to ask. Oh, you look good.
Oh, thanks. I don't feel too bad, but you know. Anyway, so I can't be in person Monday and Tuesday, just so you know. So I guess you could catch me by message, text message, or something like that.
Yeah, I think we can set up like a sort of a side Microsoft Teams meeting that you all can kind of be on, you know, so it's not, you're, you're, it's not going to interfere with being in the Zoom for town feeding. And Cheryl needs to be consulted or anything on that. You can, guys can kind of run, you know, that portion of the meeting. What we'll maybe do is kind of set you up on a Zoom from 6:30 to 7:30, just so we have the same normal procedure as we always have, and we can post that agenda, you know, whatever. And then once town meeting starts, we'll kind of switch over to Teams. Because I don't, I'm not too confident that you can have two Zooms going at once. So we'll want to make sure that you're able to be in town meeting just like regular, and then have Microsoft Teams on the side. Again, for purposes of, if you're consulted on something, if you want to discuss something or deliberate on something related, you'll be able to do that. So we will, I'll look into that tomorrow and send out detailed instructions. And we can, we can, we can get that all set up.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll plan to meet 7:30 on Monday, though, not until then.
Right.
Great. Good. Sorry, Cheryl, again. That's a bummer, but glad you don't feel too poorly. So the June 23rd, July 14th are our next meetings. And now we have approval of minutes. I don't know if everybody got to look them over, but it's May 12th and April 28th. And Cheryl, you want to introduce those?
So I, I didn't have an opportunity to review the minutes that came in today, but one set, was that the set that I had already reviewed prior to the last meeting? The earlier set?
It was, but you did say, you made some edits, but when I went on, I didn't see the red lines like I normally see your crossouts. It looks like just what I had read before.
Okay, well then, I'm sorry, let me double check that. So if we can defer the minutes?
Yep, let's do that. That sounds good.
One comment on the minutes. I believe the minutes that we received today, the date at the top of the 30th meeting, I'm sorry, the date at the top of the 31st meeting on the document I received indicates April 28th. I think it's just, I think it should have, it shouldn't say May 26th. The 31st meeting would have been May 26th, but I think if you look at the document that we received.
I'm looking at it right now. Yes, so that is a correction. It is the 20, it was the 26th.
Right.
So we'll make that change. Julia, did you get that? So it should be May 12th.
Just a dumb typo, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Very easily done. So, so we'll have May 12th, and we're deferring May 26th. Meeting minutes.
Okay, got it.
Good catch, Sean.
Thank you, Julia.
Great. And now on to staff update.
Nothing I just can do since last time. So in the interest of getting through our agenda at the late hour, we could defer that till, till back to meeting.
Okay. The only thing that I was going to ask, Tim, if we, are we getting materials for 34 Milton Street? Will they be coming in for the?
So, no. So we, I've been in touch with, with the engineer that's working on that. We want to do a technical review on those materials before we schedule a public hearing to make sure that that application is complete and ready for plant work review. So Josh has been doing that. That's his first technical review. It's his bread and butter work for his position. So haven't had a chance to look at his results, but it doesn't, he didn't flag anything for me that's too egregious or missing. It's just, we want to make sure that we get DPW and the Engineering Department lined up with their review of that. So I'm going to take a look at the results of his review tomorrow. And then from there, we'll, we'll get a public hearing scheduled. We've got to do it two weeks in advance. So I'd have to look at the calendar. I don't know if, if the best case scenario is, we could conceivably get it in for the 23rd. But if they are missing material, we don't want to get a public hearing on the books until they have a completed application. So we'll take tomorrow and Monday to kind of sort through that. And then I'll let you know if we can get something on the books for the 23rd.
That's great. And the only reason why I'm asking, it would be nice if we could do a site walk out there before so we can all be familiar with that site. I think no one attended. There was a site walk scheduled, but no one went. So there were a few neighbors that went, but.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, 100%. And I know, like, we were trying to piggyback on some Conservation Commission work that was going on that day. It just wasn't really good driving. So I think we all kind of agree that, you know, prior to the public hearing, or at least at the start of the public hearing, we would have a site walk out there. We'll definitely get that organized.
Perfect. That's great. And now on to citizens speak, unless there's anything else, Tim?
So we have Timothy Hoey with his hand up. So I'm going to hit allow to talk. Timothy, if you want to unmute yourself, you can go ahead and speak, speak.
Hi, Tim Hoey. I've never been on one of these things. I didn't know how it operated. So that's why I put my hand up at the beginning, but I'm just willing to listen at this point.
Great, welcome, Tim. Great, welcome, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, so we can, all right, so. Okay, great. Okay, so moving on to new business. We can let in Laura Delche, Delche?
Laura will pronounce her name for you.
It's a beautiful name, Laura Delche, Assistant Health Director to make an announcement on Community Health Assessment Survey. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually Delacay. I know, no one gets it the first time. So don't take, I don't take it personally. And I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, and Planning Board members for allowing me to come on your meeting and to speak. And also, congratulations to Member Fahey and Member Olfield on your recent election. Congrats to you. And thank you, Tim, for putting this together. Just to recap to anyone on this meeting, my name is Laura Delacay, and I am currently serving as the Assistant Health Director for the Milton Health Department. And today, I'm just going to be reading a brief announcement that I have about our community-wide health assessment to foster some community buy-in as well as interest to partake in the community health, health assessment through our CHAW working group, which I will explain in this announcement. I'm just going to read this right here. "Good evening. My name is Laura Delacay, and we have some exciting news to share with you. The Milton Health Department has received funding to conduct a community health assessment, also known as a CHAW, and formulate a community health improvement plan, also known as a CHIP. Thanks to the efforts of Senator Walter Timothy and securing federal ARPA money for this project, the Milton Health Department has never before conducted a formal assessment to uncover what types of health challenges, service gaps, and health disparities exist in Milton. Yet, is it a best practice for state and local health departments as well as community hospitals? This process will allow us to collect information through stakeholder interviews, focus groups, and surveys, and by analyzing existing statistical data collected by our partner and governmental organizations to help us better understand and address Milton's greatest health needs and identify those who may be at greatest risk. We have access to regional epidemiologists who will help us collect and analyze the findings. And this data will be used to inform the development of a strategic action plan, also referred as the Community Health Improvement Plan, which will focus on addressing preventable illnesses and injuries as well as the mental and behavioral health needs of adult and young residents. Ultimately, we hope that this process and data will bring new policies, procedures, and resources that will promote a healthier Milton. We hope that our town agencies, partners, and residents will help to make this a successful effort by sharing their ideas, perspectives, and data. I am also pleased to announce that the Board of Health unanimously voted to approve Milton resident Lori Stillman as a project manager overseeing the design and implementation of the CHAW and the CHIP, and guide the team over the next nine to 12 months. Ms. Stillman has over 35 years of postgraduate experience managing public health organizations and community health improvement programs across New England, and is thoroughly familiar with many health data sources that exist within the town and has fostered excellent trusting relationships with community leaders and institutions across sectors. In addition to Ms. Stillman, our assessment team will consist of the Health Director, Caroline Concilla, myself, and two regional epidemiologists. Our efforts will be coordinated with the Milton Coalition, a program to address substance use among youth in the Health Department. The Milton Health Department is committed to ensuring that the assessment and strategic plan development will be a transparent, community-based participatory process. We are excited that the Partnership for a Healthy Milton, a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting a healthier Milton, will serve as the project's core CHAW working group, leading the charge to reach out to local community and grassroots organizations, leaders, and residents to assist with the comprehensive, thoughtful, and respectful plan of action. If you know of anyone who might be interested in joining the CHAW Working Group through the Partnership for a Healthy Milton, we are taking applications or letters of interest until June 15th of this year. We are very fortunate to already have many residents expressing interest. Please contact the Milton Health Department by June 15th, 2022 at 617-898-4886 to be considered for a position on the CHAW Working Group. The time commitment will be meeting up to every two hours for every four to six weeks over a nine to 12-month period. We thank you for allowing us to make this announcement, and we hope they will be involved and point us in relevant data that might provide us with insights, knowledge, and perspectives on how we can make Milton a healthier town to live in for all. Thank you, everyone."
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks so much.
From anybody?
So I just wanted to say, the planning as a field and zoning as a regulatory tool actually have their origins in public health. So my department takes very seriously the public health overlaps between planning and the kind of very direct work that Laura and her department do. So I've said, I've said it to Laura face-to-face already, but she can count on my department's full support for this initiative. Happy to contribute in any way, any expertise that we have or resources that we have. I think this is a great initiative that they're doing. It's really, you know, not a knock on the department, but long overdue. You know, and I'm really glad that the resources finally became available. So really looking forward to be part of this.
Thank you, Tim.
Great, Cheryl?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Tim just said. I've known Lori Stillman for a long time. So when I saw the announcement in the Milton Times, I reached out to her and I said, will this assessment include the public health benefits of access to open space, to having sidewalks and bike trails, and even to have safe and affordable and cleanly housing? Because they all have impacts on, on health. And, and she said that she was very interested in that aspect of it as well. And so I hope that, that we will all participate in whatever way they feel we can be helpful.
Agreed. Thank you so much. And Lori does plan to conduct 20 key stakeholder informant interviews. So I could definitely suggest either Tim or a member of the Planning Board to be a possible key stakeholder interview, interviewee. And again, part of our assessment will be looking at the built environment. So that's definitely something I would want to address in Milton. And I know, just a little side note, but I know the Director, anytime we look at 40Bs coming into the town, she always wants to know where the sidewalks are at, the green spaces. So we are thinking of you guys in that terms.
Terrific. Thank you so much. It's wonderful.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, Laura. You too.
Okay, that was great. And moving on to old business, we can now bring in our, for the Milton Village Design Guidelines, our representatives from Dodson and Flinker. Welcome, Dylan.
Dylan, I think you're still on mute.
Sorry about that.
Great, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Happy to be your old business for tonight. Hopefully, we can make it new again and make some progress. So how much time do we have tonight?
All evening.
You guys are the only item left on the agenda, so.
Okay. Do people want to give me an approximate point at which they're going to turn into pumpkins? I know I've worn you guys out the last two times we've met, so.
I think 10 o'clock will do it for me.
Okay. I'm hoping we don't have to go that long. All right. So I wanted to start with some of the items that we didn't get to last time. There are just a couple of them. And then after that, I will walk through some of the revisions that we've made to the document since then, basically just showing you. We've made some progress on putting on images, so I wanted to show you what we're doing and make sure we're heading in the right direction. So picking up with the things we were talking about, we didn't get to last time. I think there's, there are a couple of topics that I've heard differing opinions on that I just wanted to get clarification on. One, I think, is a pretty small item. So let's start with that, which is about windows. So I had written in a provision that said that windows should, should be recessed from the surface of a wall in some circumstances. And I think I heard mixed opinions about whether that was appropriate to include or not. Cheryl had pointed out that they're building energy implications to that, that getting that detailing right of the wall is difficult. And that, you know, contemporary construction practices don't necessarily have punched windows. And then I think I saw in an email from Meredith that she thought that punching windows was important because it created shadow lines that are consistent with the historic character of Milton. So I just want to know which, which way I should go with that, whether I should take that out, keep it in, or have some sort of caveat.
I think I've punched openings recessed really in historic masonry. I don't necessarily think of it that way in clapboard or other kinds of construction. So I do think that window detailing that does provide a shadow line is attractive. So I think you can say there's a preference for it, but I just wouldn't want, I would want to acknowledge that it really is very dependent on materials used and the detailing and whether you're going for passive house or not, and whether the codes are going to go there in the future. So there's a lot of the envelope, as I call it, which is the exterior materials, the roof and the windows, et cetera, that are dictated in the energy codes, and those are continuing to evolve. And they really are moving towards passive house. And without getting into all the technical complexities of that, I just would say that, you know, saying it's a preference is fine if, you know, if, and saying, I actually think it's even preferable to say, you know, detailing and materials that provide, I'm not sure exactly how to phrase this, but shadows, you know, are actually, would be more explanatory than just giving a solution, which is a recessed window. You know, so I think if we, we're better off saying what we'd like to see in terms of an end result than a solution, in my opinion. Because then you, you can leave it to the design team to, to come up with their solutions for that.
Yeah.
It may be that you have some kind of detailing around the opening that brings it forward. Or, you know, there's different, there's also, I've seen some beautiful detailing where the masonry steps back itself, and then the windows within that. It's not just the frame of the window.
Right.
So if you say you want to get some shadow relief, you know, some shadow interest on the facade, and windows is a good place for it, but there's other ways to do it, too. So anyway, those are some of my thoughts.
And I would agree with that.
Great, okay. Thanks. Okay, then the next one is, is materials. There was a comment from a member of the public last time asking about materials. And I kind of punted and said we would get to it later, and we never did. And I kind of punted and said we'll get to it later, and we never did. Um, so I'm going to put up my, just a page that is on materials. And as, as, as I said to that, uh, member of the public last time, the design guidelines themselves don't specify, as they're written, they don't specify specific materials. Um, the design standards say building finished materials should be appropriate to traditional New England architecture may include, but shall not be limited to brick, stone, wood, or composite materials with visual characteristics similar to wood. Vinyl shall not be used as a primary finish. And then the design guidelines that we wrote basically say, um, materials should have, should be durable and have a long track record of proven performances, performance. They should be used in ways to express their inherent qualities. Um, they shouldn't be used to fake other materials. Variation of materials may be used to create emphasized architectural details and create shadow lines, um, to communicate construction techniques and functions of interior, um, building elements. And then finally, that bright and contrasting colors, combinations of four or more colors and highly reflective materials that direct heat and glare onto adjacent buildings should not be used. So that's, that's what we have in there for materials. And I just want to, I want to know if that's enough. If it's, if it's adequate, if it needs more or less or something else.
So I, I actually have a, a, a question maybe, and, and I, I don't quite have an opinion, but maybe other folks can kind of express what their kind of preferences are. When, when, when we say, you know, and it's almost, how can you disagree with this? Materials should be used in ways that express their inherent qualities. They should be, not be used to express the qualities of other material. But I, I, I think, you know, the, the great example is, you know, clapboard, party board with kind of a wood grain on it. Which I, I think isn't necessarily bad, but, but also would kind of go against this principle of, you know, what, what is the inherent quality of party board? It's, I, I actually don't know. I mean, it's a, you know, composite type material. But I think you, you do frequently see it with that kind of like wood kind of finish to it, which, which I think could be pretty successful. Um, you know, if it's, if it's used, um, you know, judiciously and deliberately. But, um, I, I just wonder what people think about that. I mean, obviously, you know, I, you know, my brother lives in a house that's vinyl with kind of the wood grain on it, and it's like, all right, who are we kidding? Um, but I, I, I don't necessarily think that's always the case with party board. Um, and, and, and again, also, you know, if, if you had, you know, metal shingles that, that had a kind of wood kind of quality to them that, you know, again, I, I, I just like, what, what is the, what is the priority that we're trying to get after? Because I, I do think that, you know, if, if you go too far down that road, then you're starting to kind of really kind of diminish the idea of, of having kind of material requirements that are, you know, reflective of the kind of historic character of the neighborhood. But also, you know, you don't want to limit things to the point that, you know, we're, we're only building cedar shingle kind of houses. So I, I don't know what people think about that.
I, I agree with you, Tim. And, um, one of the things, um, that I mentioned in an email to Dylan today was that, um, there are, uh, a number of manufacturers now making, um, kind of a metal panel that's in the dimensions of a plank like you would with Clappard, uh, with a wood, um, finish to it, if you will, if it, it looks like wood. And it's, it's used in commercial where you want to get commercial construction where you want to get the warmth of wood, but it might be in a location that, um, would be hard to maintain natural wood in a reasonable way. And, um, so that too would be something where that, that sentence in, in number two should not be used to express the qualities of other materials. That particular material is being used quite a bit, and I think quite successfully. And I'll just want to point out a kind of a counter to only having something be seated. You know, certain, you can't control how people will maintain their buildings down the road. And there's a Boston Public Library branch in Alston that my, the day it was built was absolutely gorgeous. But over time, it wasn't maintained, and the wood looked absolutely horrible. And I couldn't, and it wasn't that long, a, a time period, and I couldn't believe how bad it looked. Because I went to several meetings there. It's the Honin.
Is that teak on the outside?
Um, not sure. So, um, you know, there, um, and there's a, um, there's a lot of, um, work being done in materials all the time. Um, and so, um, there's some really, uh, beautiful things being done in terracotta in a dense fiberglass mount, which is different than a hardy plank, because hardy has a little more wood fiber in it. Uh, but these denser have more of a concrete, but their finishes are incredible, uh, and you, they're, um, so I, I guess, um, I, I too, just to make, uh, to not carry on too long with this, I, 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 I would say that I would not like to see that sentence that says they should not be used to express the qualities of other materials.
Sean, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Dylan. If we were to have addressed this guideline twenty years ago, uh, we, we could have, we could have created a guideline that would have restricted use of materials that are very commonly used today. You mentioned hardy wood, Tim. You know, hardy wood, I think, is a great solution. Um, you know, that we, we, we now use, and it does exactly what Cheryl said. It, it allows buildings to be maintained, um, much more successfully than, uh, you know, traditional wood clapboard siding. So I do think we should create the latitude that, you know, as advances are made in, um, envelope materials that were not so restrictive that the developer can't propose something that would be outside of the guidelines. But that's probably hard Dylan to do, um, you know, in phrases and expressions. But I think it's really important for this guideline. I, I would lean towards having a guideline that, um, allows somebody to have a building that's easier to maintain than a guideline that's restrictive, that makes it so hard to maintain, that it doesn't get maintained. So, uh, the only concern I have, and I, I'm not really sure. You know, I, you mentioned Tim, a sibling that has vinyl siding, and I, I just personally don't like vinyl siding at all. You know, I mean, but, uh, when we say vinyl shall not be used as a primary finish, can you, can you expand on that a little bit, Dylan? I, I, I mean, I would assume that that means that certainly the guideline would, would steer someone away from using vinyl siding as a, as a siding material for, you know, uh, extensive areas, but can you talk a little bit about?
That's, that's from the zoning, it's a design, design standard, and I would interpret it the same way that you, it may be appropriate to have a limited amount of vinyl, but not your primary material.
Okay. Yeah, what we, what we've seen, and I, I remember months ago before, you know, before I was a member of the, of the Planning Board, in, in one of the discussions that we had, we talked about metal panel. And, um, there were a number of images that were presented, uh, as part of that meeting back then. And I, I don't know how the other members feel, but, um, there's, if you drive through South Boston now, there are so many residential buildings that have been built. And the, the primary finish on the exterior of the building is metal panel. I don't find it that appealing, and I certainly don't find it to be a fit for architecturally what we whole Milton, you know, you know, what this has, this area of town. But how does metal panel fit into the guideline here?
Sean, I did have two comments from public persons against, who do not want to see metal panels. So just on that note, sorry.
Or maybe we say something like, um, like, uh, metal paneling might need approval of the planning board or something. To your point of not limiting, um, you know, design, but also giving the planning board, um, a chance to kind of weigh in and, and see if it fits in the right application.
One thing I might suggest is giving a couple of examples of the way we could see metal panel being used. Like I sent, um, one to Dylan today. Um, Dylan, I don't know if you can share that one. But also I could, I could, um, probably provide a couple that use the, uh, the wood that I was describing that looks, you know, that it's used in a soffit or used in other, um, entrances and so forth. It, I'm not necessarily suggesting it's the primary building material. Uh, but it, it can often, you know, if you think about in the historic buildings, even oftentimes cornices are made out of metal. Or there's, um, bay windows that have like metal on them that probably were copper in the day. Um, so when you say metal, you know, what are we talking about? Because there's a lot of different ways. I mean, there, there's metal shingles even that can be quite attractive. So I think, you know, maybe what we don't want is like large sheets of unarticulated or flat shiny metal. You know, maybe, I think I would agree with, um. So I, I, I guess maybe if we have a little more time and can provide it some images that we can agree upon are good examples of the use of metal, that that could help guide somebody.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, a part of, I, 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 I forget who was getting after it earlier, but I, 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 I think it's more about like, what are the outcomes that we're looking for? And I think it's pretty clear that what we're looking for is materials that, that have a, a, a traditional look and feel. You know, masonry, you know, brick, wood, um, you know, and, and I think, you know, a way to kind of thread the needle is to, is to maybe be kind of explicit about that, is that, you know, these are the outcomes we're looking for. We're looking for, you know, traditional, you know, and so if that's achieved through a cementitious material or a metal material, um, you know, then that's fine. And I think, you know, an acknowledgement, I, I, I think Cheryl's point about unarticulated flat sheets, I think that gets after. And we've got the two inappropriate precedents here that I think, you know, what we're talking about, which, you know, may be appropriate in other parts of town, but especially in a, in a historic district that we're trying to achieve kind of that, you know, that, that union of the contemporary and the historic. You know, just getting after, you know, this is what we're looking for. Um, and, and, and kind of, I, I, I think the principle, which, you know, is in the design standards about vinyl shall not be used as a primary finish. You know, I think, you know, there may be places where, you know, you know, a sheet of metal kind of makes sense as an accent, but maybe not as, you know, the whole sort of face of a building. So I think, you know, less about this material is good, that material is bad, and more like this outcome is good, and this outcome is not something that we're interested in. And, and, and to Baggy's point earlier, you know, we want to put as much into the guidelines as possible. But, Baggy, at the end of the day, all of this is in your discretion. So if you see a sheet metal surface above, you can absolutely approve it. Uh, and if you see something that you hate, um, you don't have to approve it at all. Um, so, you know, that's, I think that's inherent, but I think, you know, being clear about what you're looking for, I think is kind of the goal of these things. And so, you know, rather than having people try to like guess, just kind of put it out there.
Yeah, I would just say like, here we have appropriate being historic building. And, and, you know, maybe that's the, the example of, of the existing historic. And then inappropriate would be one of the buildings that's newer construction. Like there's the one that people gravitated towards during the public, uh, meeting, um, that was brick and I think had a bay window. Uh, and I, um, so maybe we have, and like, I think the one I sent today is a good example of a new building that has nods to historic detailing, to historic, um, features like a cornice, for example. So, you know, I, I think it's better to have examples too of what we want. And so this has the, the, the use of metal at the top. Um, and the, and the, a top floor that's set back with the brick as the base. Others can chime in on whether they think that's a good example or not. But it's just something where metals also use, uh, with combining the windows where the entrance is. Sort of a subtle detail of announcing where the entrance is.
I think, I think that's, I think this is, uh, not this building exactly, but I think the use as, as an accent feature in this particular case, you know,
Recording stopped.
Is, um, in my opinion, it's, it, it would be okay. Don't know that I love this particular, I hope you didn't design this show, but I don't know that I actually love, love everything about it. But I, I think this is what we're going to find. We'll, we'll find some designs that are proposed that will have, you know, that'll have, you know, accents and uses of, of some metal materials that I think can be really appealing if done right.
Yeah, the, what the example is.
Recording in progress.
Those getting at the examples really like the use of the metal is like the cornice at the top. And I think there had been a comment from someone before, or in, maybe it was in the written email, um, about something stepped back at the top. And the reason you step something back at the top is to have that top floor received, you know, from view. And, uh, you know, here you do, that metal is used basically to provide, uh, like your guard rail. So here a solid guard rail versus something that would be like, um, a railing type guard rail. So it's built into the architecture. So, you know, I think there's a few things that could be pointed out in this. And, you know, I'm not saying that this is a design solution that can pop into this neighborhood. But there are, um, things about it, I think are, are, uh, well done. Even, um, at the, uh, where the building meets the sidewalk, it's not, obviously it's right on the sidewalk, but there's room for a planter. You know, and it does, um, in the way the steps kind of, you know, it's recessed entrance and the steps come down. Anyway, there's some subtlety, subtle details to it that I think, um, um, would be appropriate kinds of details here. But anyway, the initial thing when I saw it was the use of the metal.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so I, I, um, Tim was saying earlier that it's kind of, what do you, what's the goal you're trying to achieve? And I think I heard, I think I've heard things about, um, not having a lot of shine, not having big, undifferentiated shiny panels, right? So there's, there's something about the, the reflectiveness of the material, I think, which was, was written into the design guidelines already about not having excessive glare and reflected heat. Um, and I think there might be something about texture as well, like having enough texture, but not too much texture, right? If you have an undifferentiated flat metal panel, it has no texture to it. Whereas materials like brick or wood inherently have texture to them.
Yeah, and that's where I was getting at with metal panels are now being done in all different, um, sizes and shapes. So if you think of some of the ones, I think that Sean's thinking of in the South End, they're probably, you know, fairly flat, fairly big panels. And now metal panels are being produced more commonly in what I call plank, which is really the size of more like shingles, right? But you can also get sheets of metal that are, have deep reveals that provide the same idea of a shadow line that gives you the same kind of, um, dimension as you might get from Clappard. Um, and that comes through a kind of like a corrugation, if you will. It's not really corrugated in the round corrugated industrial sense, but, you know, you get a lot of different profiles in metal now. So I think we could encourage in, in, um, if, if metal is used, that it have, um, dimensional variation or articulation to provide shadow and, um, texture. Not literal texture like you would get with brick, for example, but texture that you get through the size, the shape, the, um, reveals, et cetera.
Can I, can I, can I interrupt for just one, one minute to handle a technical issue? Um, Sean, are you listening? Can you chime? Recording since then on my machine. I would love to not continue doing that, so I don't know if I can stop recording and you can start recording again, and then we could stitch it all together.
You can do that, Tim, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to stop recording right now. And then our.
You can record me on my phone as well.
What was that?
Thank you both.
Yeah, Julie.
I'm recording on my phone.
Yeah, do you want to stop recording and then Sean can be the, the one recording?
Yep, I just did.
Okay, it still says recording. So Sean, is that you that's recording now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So, um, let's, let's cut this. Eventually, I will send you the sort of a few minutes that I was recording. Um, and, and hopefully we can stitch it together and it'll be. And, and hopefully we can stitch together and it'll be a nice, high production value experience for everybody as, as usual. So sorry, sorry about that delay. I wanted to make sure that, um, we, we have our recording for us ready, so I forgot that.
I am so glad I'm not the Sean that had to deal with that. You know, one, one thought on this, and I, I, I think the way that Dylan has written the first paragraph allows for the use of. A metal product, Cheryl, the way that you described it. I, I think, and I think we have the protection in the last paragraph, which is number four, that reads bright and contrasting colors. And highly reflective materials that direct heat and glamor interjection should not be used. So. Well, I think that gives us the protection against what we were, I think what we were worried about with metal panel, but in that first paragraph. If I'm reading this properly, uh, building finished materials shall be appropriate to traditional moving and architecture, may include, may include, but shall not be limited to. Brick, stone, wood, or composite materials with visual characteristics somewhat of wood. So. It's allowing, the way that's written, I believe that allows somebody to use a metal product that, you know, it's not, it's. Right? Dylan, am I, am I right in my interpretation of that paragraph?
Yeah, that's, that's how I interpret it, yeah.
So.
One thing I would say about that paragraph is. You know, those metals might be shiny, but they still might not direct the heat and glare. So do we really need the heat and glare part of that? I mean, maybe the heat keep the glare, you know, but I don't know that we really need the heat part. Just to be more clear, that it's gonna apply to more than just something that, that's pretty dramatic, that impact. I don't think you find that all that often unless it had a very, almost mirror-like kind of finish to it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
But I think you're right otherwise, Sean. You know, in terms of the, um, allowing for metal, I was just really commenting more on, there was someone who had sent in comments. Suggested that metal shouldn't be allowed. And, um, I, I just think there's, the discussion about metal's been useful, I, I hope. Because it's, um, you know, all different forms and, um, just like we talked about the, the windows and the recessing them. I agree with Tim and Dylan about, let's be more specific about, uh, what our outcomes are versus, you know, prohibiting materials.
Yes, and the comment I received was not as much, you know, for some detailing and I liked that cornice piece. It was more. Uh, massive pieces breaking up, you know, trying to break up massing where, um, the comment said. They could, you know, they could be anywhere in the USA. It doesn't, you know, they're very sort of a generic, we, that I think we would try to avoid. Um, and another comment that the person who sent me, an architect who sent me some comments, um, was regarding roofing and. You know, particularly how you can use a mansard roof to get a, you know, a, an upper story that doesn't necessarily look like an additional story. But I am very sensitive to, when I see a mansard roof with really cheap shingles, it just makes the whole building look cheap. This, this, um, person suggested slate, but I know sometimes slate is cost prohibitive, but there are materials that. Look, look like slate, you wouldn't, you know, emulate and have the same feel. So Dylan, I just was gonna ask you if we should have anything in about roof materials.
So I did add some of those provisions about mansard roofs, um, to the design guidelines. Those were good and worthy comments.
Can you show us what you put there?
Sure.
I think, you know. Mansard isn't the only solution for the top floor, so I don't want to make, I don't want us to become a totally mansard district. Not on that now. You know, the brick buildings that we have, like the Web Mill Building, you know, don't, don't do that and I, I. And some are flat roof and some are pitched and some are slate and some are not, you know, I, I would like for us to have that variety still.
Yes, I agree.
Alright, so yeah, so I'll start a little back then, so.
You did put it in.
Yeah, so this, this is coming off the end of the section about step backs. Upper story step, step backs, so I'm gonna skip over that for now, but move on to roofs. So. Basically it says, roof forms, it'd be nice if they're similar to historic precedents. Most common roof shapes in their area are gable, hip and flat. There are three examples of buildings in the area that have those kinds of roofs. Says pitch roofs aren't mandatory, but where they're used, they should have a minimum pitch of at least six twelve. Incorporate traditional forms and tall peaked roofs are encouraged to reduce the apparent scale of buildings while accommodating a full top floor. There's an image there of showing that. Then moving on to mansard roofs. They're acceptable. The design should reflect historic precedents. Generally, a mansard roof should only be used above the third story of a building. Other than a small kick to meet the eve at its bottom, a mansard roof should not project beyond the face of the wall below. The eve should add a higher level of detail. Roof should be surfaced with slate or a material with similar appearance. Roof should include dormers that contain occupiable space. Dormer should be appropriately scaled design based on historic precedents. Um, and then there's an example of one that could be appropriate from thirty-six Central Street, Central Ave. Um, and one that would not be appropriate from Beacon, New York. So this is an example of the. The mansard roof, basically the bulk of it goes beyond the wall, so it kind of creates a mushroom shape. And then the dormers are not projecting, they're recessed. Um, and it's generally pretty large compared to the size of the floors below it.
Can I just point out here, Dylan, too, that that building up there is a good example of, like, where the windows are more horizontal in appearance than vertical.
Yeah.
Which is another.
Yeah.
Poor design choice, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's a pretty bad building.
There's a number of poor design choices in that building.
Yeah.
Dylan, while we're on this, um, on this particular page, um, I, I just want to make sure that we, item four. It reads visible roof should incorporate durable materials like asphalt, asphalt shingles, wood shingles, slate or standing seam metal. That, that allows, that allows standing seam metal to be used as a, as an entire roof, right?
Yep. I mean, so any of this is just, is of course just at the board's discretion. So the, the like here is, these are examples of things. That presumably the board would think are acceptable. If they're not acceptable, we should definitely take them out. So standing seam is not. Appropriate in the board's opinion, it should come out.
Yeah, I, I don't know how it fits in, uh, maybe, maybe as an accented section of, you know, in, in some, in some buildings, it might be okay, but. If that was the primary roof surface, I think it would not be consistent with what the, the village should have.
I would agree, yeah.
Okay, should I take it up?
Cheryl, what's your opinion?
And there is no standing seam roof there now, but it's one of those things where if you think about over history, like. A copper, you know, used on the roof would be common, especially on the dormer. So, um.
Yeah, there's that one copper roof on the, um, entryway to one of the buildings that's in the back. Over by the river.
Uh, you know, having it be something where it, if, let's just say, for example, you had a bay window which had metal on it in the historic building. Then you may have had some metal on a, on some dormers. It may not have been that the whole roof was metal.
Right.
You know, it's again, we think of metal as because it's saying standing seam. So I, you know, um.
So maybe just metal and not the standing seam, yeah.
Yeah, because then it could have, then you might think somebody might say, okay, I'll put some copper, I mean, copper's expensive today, but you know. Copper detailing or other kinds of metal which could be attractive.
I think there's definitely some metal products that would be, you know, attractive and aesthetically, you know, acceptable, but a standing seam. Standing seam is a standing seam. It's a very defined.
Right.
Type of roof.
Okay.
So Sean, you're saying it's metal?
I think, I mean, it, it does, it does, uh, it does provide, well, how does someone interpret metal? Is it, is it so loosely interpreted that it could be a standing seam metal roof?
Probably metal.
Well, what you could do is you could, um. You, you, you could take metal off of that sentence and say it, something about metal. Being used as, um, in. Accent or limited areas, something like that, so that you're saying you don't want it as a primary roof material.
Yeah, or, or, or just not say anything about it and if people propose it, then that's fine. Right? Is it something, if it's something you want to encourage, then I think it should be listed. If it's not something you want to encourage, then. It probably shouldn't be listed.
Or list copper. So then they know that we like copper.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Does that work for other people?
Yes. Dylan, can I ask a question going back to, um, windows for a second, which, um, I don't know if this is. I just wouldn't, Cheryl was showing that other, that other picture. I often see buildings that are historic where they've taken out old windows, if it's a big bay. And instead of, you know, where they would have had divided light, they put in just a solid, um, panel of glass. So is there a place where we can say divided light is, is preferable, divided? You know, windows, um, and, um, something along the lines of store glazing should be respectful of historical precedent and have appropriate light sizes. Avoiding plate glass.
Yeah, I, I saw that comment from you and I haven't incorporated that yet. There are a lot of comments I haven't incorporated.
We had, we had a, a restoration of an old historic building, um, Ben's Cookie Company, and. They took out an old beautiful window and they just put in a solid and it just, it completely changed that, that feel of it being that old. An old historic building, so that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, so Meredith, I think there are two separate things there. One is like, is about, um, renovations to historic structures. Which probably deserves its own little section. You know, and so I think in that, in that context or placing. Windows with. Windows with similar configuration of lights would make sense. Um, you, you all. Do have some sort of historic review though, right? In this area?
No, we do not. It's not a local historic district.
Okay. Alright, so we can include that.
Foundation, this may be the foundation for that, where.
Yeah, and then, so I think that, that the other question is whether requiring divided lights is appropriate for new construction.
So Dylan, one thing I just want to point out in the design standard itself. It does say, uh, in general, windows should be taller than they are wide on both the first and upper floors. Street front windows that are horizontally oriented may be broken up with the use of mullions. So that's more like the ground floor, but I think, and maybe that's what you're getting at, Meredith, uh, because then elsewhere. It talks about there being, um. In your design guideline section that adds on to, I guess, the standard about being, limiting the window types and shapes and so forth. But I, I do think, um, there could be something added about, um. Having either mullions or divided lights. I mean, again, the energy efficiency of windows oftentimes that what. Has to be done is that there's, um, an insert into the, between the two panes of glass and then something applied on the exterior. Um, which isn't exactly what the historic was, but that's the way it's, it's done. But even so, I mean, breaking up windows into multiple panes, I think you can just put something of that nature, you know, to, um. To reinforce the, um. The breakdown in scale.
Right. That's great.
Alright. Let me just take a note here. Okay. Is there some? Okay, I'll add that. Um, so going back to this, this mansard question, the roof section, um. Did, does this, does this work? Was written about mansard roofs and, um, is it clear that, I think it's clear that it's not the only option.
Yes.
It's one of many.
I think it, I think it's fine that way. It's not requiring it.
Okay. Alright, um, so those were, that, I think that ends my list of, of little things. On the bigger things list from last time, there, there's the question of if there's anything in this that you guys want to cut. Like that you think is unnecessary or inappropriate. And, you know, I, I would say, keep in mind that you're gonna have to use this document, um.
So Dylan, I sent you some information, a couple of photos on parking that we talked about a little bit last time and. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that a little bit, how we could, um, expand some on the landscape screening or landscape requirements.
Um, yeah, can, can we do that later?
Yes. Later meaning later, later meeting?
Yeah, later this meeting, yeah.
Later this meeting, okay, I was gonna say, we're, we're in June now, we're running up against our end of June deadline, okay. Later this meeting, yes, okay.
So was, was there anything that people had seen when they reviewed this that they thought should not be in there?
No, uh, Dylan, not in, not in my opinion. I, I don't, I think there's, I think there's plenty written. I, I haven't seen anything that I would suggest to remove.
Okay.
More information, I think it's, it's helpful, more helpful.
Okay.
Since they're just guidelines.
So Dylan, on page sixteen, you had a question. I don't think you brought up number eleven. Where, uh, the sidewalk is expanded, should transfer a ownership of this area to the town. I thought it's an easement, at least in my other communities I've worked on, it's an easement requirement. So that the town gets an easement to use that private property for that public use, which is the sidewalk use. You see what you, your question here?
Yeah, 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 I mean it.
Ownership is a whole nother thing than easement.
Right, an easement, I mean, and then you could, because you could require them to like. Essentially build the sidewalk, but not have public access to it.
Oh yeah, no, I mean, like Boston requires private property owners to develop, to expand the sidewalks and build the sidewalks all the time. And what they require is an easement to be able to have that be public use.
They're requiring people to. Have a front setback and build a sidewalk on it.
They're requiring, they want wider sidewalks and it, they don't want, it's in order to get them, they're not going into the street, they're going into private property. So if you want to develop, uh, Tim probably can speak to this as well, having worked with the city. I'm, I'm doing one right now in Blue Hill Ave and they're requiring additional three feet on Blue Hill Avenue and additional two feet on the side street. And so, um, and it will be an easement requirement that, for that sidewalk expansion.
Yeah, that, that tracks. I, I guess my, my question on this would be, is that a design guidelines thing or is that something that the board just needs to make sure is. As a, you know, um, I, I, I think. I, I, I would hesitate to go into sort of those legalities in this type of document, but, but again, also. You know, in retrospect, maybe that could have been in the zoning. I don't know if you can do that in the zoning, but I think. Obviously, you know, if you are getting that public space, there has to be some, you know, mechanism to allow access over that. So I, I think that's appropriate for the special permit. Um, and I, I think maybe it would be a little too. In the weedsy for, for this type of document.
So Tim, this, this document says, the project component is encouraged to allow public access to the resulting front setback area, but is not required to. I think that should come out.
And so the, what, what is the, I don't have the zoning in front of me. Is, is there, is that, is that part of one of like the public benefits or is that like in the setbacks or anything or?
Well, the standard says where the sidewalk width is less than six feet at the building front, it's new building shop. and the building shop should provide a setback for expansion of the sidewalk, but to a minimum of 10 feet to allow for additional sidewalk seating or activity. So the question becomes, unless you think, let's think of a hypothetical. Somebody's going to put a cafe there and they're going to expand the sidewalk so you can have seating. Like let's say Newbury Street, right? So, but it's on private property. Well, a private property that gets kind of cordoned off with planters or something else so that it's part of that private setting, right? So that's a little different than if it's something where you actually want the width of sidewalk so that you have enough room to have street trees and a clear walking path. In the, that's the latter scenario, you need public access for it. In the first scenario, you don't.
Right. Yeah, and the way, the way the standard is written, it says, well, to allow for additional sidewalk seating or activity.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, so, so Cheryl, again, I, I, I think this goes to the specific circumstances of the development when you're, when you're going through.
Yeah, so maybe the sentence comes out then, right?
Yeah. Well, so I mean, like, so again, I don't have the document in front of me again. What's the sentence in the, in the guidelines?
All right. So it's on page 16, number 11. It says, "The project component is encouraged to allow public access." You're getting it up here?
Yeah. And it's, it's, the number is a little different and the, it's been a little revised, but yeah. It's number nine here at the top of the column.
Well, I mean, Cheryl, I guess what I would say, I, I, I actually kind of think that should stay. Because that's the thing, because the, the zoning is saying, we want you to create extra space for the, the use of your property, you know, for sidewalk seating, cafe seating, you know, whatever else. And this is, you know, hey, if, you know, maybe it's not going to be a cafe, maybe it's going to be another type of business, but we still want a wider sidewalk, you know, that gives you the option, someone designs that. And then during the special permit process, you can kind of talk through, you know, whatever type of legal mechanism is, is necessary. Because I think, you know, that what the zoning is saying is we want you to do something, you know, that brings activity to the street, but it's kind of, the building is the focus of that. Whereas this gives that sort of option of, hey, if you're not going to be doing that, maybe you just do general public access and then, you know, if you talk about it, it's better, something like that. Does that make sense? I, I hear exactly what you're saying, but I think because the zoning says what it says, this is kind of providing the other option for kind of maybe what we would also want, depending on, on what type of use.
Okay.
What confuses me about this, or what I wonder about the standard is, what if the sidewalk is seven, eight, or nine feet? So if it's less than six, you go from 10, but if it's seven, you stay at seven? Say you stay at eight? It seems a little, like if you wanted to be 10, say it's 10.
Yeah, I mean, this is another one of those situations where what's appropriate for High Street may be different than what's appropriate for Adams Street.
Yep.
And again, it's where these standards do allow for the planning board to waive, waive one or more, recognizing at the time that we did this, that it's not a one-size-fits-all district. And we were going to need to evaluate things on a project by project basis. But what we wanted to encourage was street activity, right? That's what makes more, for a lively business district or mixed-use district. You know, what people like about someplace oftentimes is that there's sidewalk cafes or ice cream shops and they can sit outside and there's planters and there's benches and nice lighting, et cetera. And so if everything is built to this, to the minimum, to the street, to the sidewalk, at a minimum sidewalk level, you, now you're required for people to be inside for everything, right? It's not, not so conducive. So we wanted to have something which encouraged that. Whether this is, it, it really will depend a bit on the, on the use, but this is kind of goes, well, it definitely goes hand in hand with requiring the commercial use at the street level.
Good. I don't remember how we got here.
I asked, did you ask if there was anything and I saw it? I went back to what I've marked with, I circled and questioned in, in the draft that I have.
Okay. All right. And then my, my last question before I start showing a little more.
Can I go back? I'm sorry, Dylan, since I'm flipping through my, my markets, yeah. On page, what was page 20 under entrances and doors? I think that when we first started talking about this, I, I questioned the 50 feet apart on the entrances as being kind of far for this size of parcels we have. I was just, did you, did you adjust that?
Let's see here. So I think it's 20 feet apart now.
Okay.
It probably should be key to the, there's a standard in there about buildings appearing to be similar to the rhythm of historic storefronts. And I probably should be keyed to that. Buildings more than, so there's a standard in the zoning, buildings more than 40 feet should be broken down into a series of smaller elements to evoke the rhythm of historic shop fronts. No interrupted facade, length of any facade should be permitted to exceed 20 horizontal feet without incorporating at least blah, blah, blah. So if you're trying to make buildings that look like they're 20 feet and having an entrance every 20 feet, makes sense to me. Did you think it was too close or too far, Cheryl?
It was 60 feet in this draft, so change it to 20 now. Or is that something coming from somewhere else?
I, I changed it to 20 based on that.
Comment? Okay.
Based on the, the design standard.
Okay.
Right up above Dylan, under number four, it does still say pedestrian entrance, entrances should be spaced no more than 50 feet apart.
Good catch.
Yeah, there we go. That's what I was asking about. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Does 20 feet seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, 20 feet seems fine. It, it may or may not work as we know, but.
Yeah. All right.
I'm also, I'm, I'm sorry, one minute.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I just was going to say, I like the entrance of the side entrance that he put in that picture, figure 33. That's very attractive. I like the angle of that building. Yeah. It's a good picture. Yeah.
Yeah, so you're getting a, you're getting a preview of what it, what it looks like.
Okay.
Some of it is, as we go through it, some of it is more, more complete than others, has more images than others. So yeah, this is, there are a lot of images of entrances in here.
Good.
I didn't, I have another in the public realm piece question, Dylan. 4.2 A2.
I'm going to stop sharing so I can just zoom there without making you all nauseous. 4.8 A2?
Yes.
So the width of the paved roadway, right of way, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, I mean, we already have roadways here. I don't know which sites are going to have new roadways, but even if we did, an enclosure of one-to-one, wait, how does that work with the height restrictions?
Yeah, I think it should be 0.75 to one. Cause I think what I worked that out to later.
I mean, if you looked at, I mean, if we could, if we can hope to narrow Adams Street, it's very wide. So, you know, the one-to-one there would, would allow for a higher building than zoning allows for, right? And then if you look at High Street, anyway, I just didn't know if you tested these on the existing conditions that we have. Because the, that just struck me as, as not being what we have there now. And I haven't tested it myself. I haven't checked the dimensions.
Yeah, I think, I will revisit that. I think I did test it. I think the number I came up with was 0.75 to one, but I'll look at it again. I think High, Adams Street was what, it's like 70 feet wide from building to building? And I don't remember what the maximum height is. I think ultimately, I, I think ultimately, the reality is that your height is low enough that there may not be a reason to have any kind of enclosure standard because.
This might set some confusion, I guess, in my view.
So maybe cut it?
Yes. My suggestion.
For the rest of you, do you have any idea what we're talking, talking about? So enclosure is like the ratio of the height of a building, height of building to the distance between them. And it's like a, you know, a key defining feature of what a place feels like when you're on, on the sidewalks or in the street. It's how enclosed the space is, how much of the sky you see. And so areas like a, you know, suburban strip is very unenclosed. It has a very low ratio of height to width, might be like 0.33 to one or something. You know, it has a medieval city like Venice with a street that's really tiny and like, you know, tall buildings is very, very enclosed.
Yeah, it's just we're not, since we're not really anticipating new roads, I guess is what, what led me to. I mean, if you were going to anticipate new roads, you'd really want to give this some consideration, but and given that the height restriction is already set somewhere else.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think in terms of the road, new road so much, it's about the height, the height restrictions, but you already have your height restrictions and it's probably below any. It's not based on enclosure, probably. Like you're not going to hit a point at which it feels overly enclosed based on your.
Well, I can just envision, somebody comes to us and says, well, the zoning says we get this height restriction. How does that relate to this? And then that new board, how are they going to determine, you're going to have to go based on the zoning, right? So, and I, I just think it's confusing.
Yeah, I cut it.
Okay. And then on the, on the 4.2, the public realm itself, the design of the public realm, and then you list everything, should come first with the design of the building facades and the pedestrian vehicular circulation, et cetera, et cetera, being subordinated to the public realm. I mean, that, the buildings are, are really going to be what, and the facades that face the streets are really important. I don't know that those facades should be subordinate, or even the circulation subordinate, based on our discussion the last time, where we talked about not wanting a lot of garage doors, which is circulation. So again, that language, I think it should be given as much attention or something like that as to the facade or in circulation, et cetera, but not necessarily subordinating the building to the, to the pub, to the sidewalk, et cetera. Maybe it's because I'm an architect.
It is because you're an architect. Yeah, I mean, the, the goal here is to not have, if, if the goal is to create an active streetscape, right? Then that front of the building and how it relates to the street is the most important thing.
Absolutely. But then you take it away then in number four. You take it away completely in number four because you say you can create a private space there.
No, that occasional amount of setbacks is like what you were showing on your example where you have a little setback with little plant. All right. So I changed it to, should be given more attention as a design.
And then similar proportion, sorry, page, the next page under, it's number six in the same section, 4.2.
Yeah.
Well, the end of his number six there, I don't know if it's still the same number, but it says, "When paths run through buildings or between fences or walls, spatial proportions should avoid excess enclosure greater than one-to-one height to width." Again, I don't know, if a building is allowed to be 45 feet tall, you're not going to have a 45 foot width walkway between buildings. Or even 35 foot tall with a 35 foot walkway between buildings. For some of these parcels, that's just going to take up most of the parcel.
Yeah, I don't know where that section is at this moment, so I can't look at it, but I, I will revisit it and fix it.
There's a diagram with it, there was.
Yeah, I know.
Did you take that diagram out?
I don't remember taking it out.
Wait, will you go back up?
He just went by it.
You just didn't go by it? Yeah. Go back one more, I think. No, one more. Well, maybe one more. No, it wasn't there. No.
It might've been moved to a different section.
Okay, well.
So, so I'm going to revisit the enclosure on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Under, I'm sorry, I, I thought that was the end, but I'm getting close, I think. On, under materials for the streetscape, it was under design and materials for sidewalk and pedestrian areas. Same thing, but I guess it's number, it's C9. It says basically, pavers made from concrete, clay, or stone. Like use of bricks or pavers made from concrete, clay, or stone is highly encouraged. The one thing I would say is that what you run into a lot is the accessibility challenges with, with brick and pavers.
Yep.
So it may be some sort of accents, you know, like was done on Elliot Street, you know, where there's brick accents. And then the sidewalk is more conducive for people who might be pushing a walker or with a cane or in a wheelchair or something.
You know, I was, I've been so impressed how the, down at the Baker Chocolate Mill is just over the river. The condition of those bricks are, they're in great shape, whoever put those in. It's, it's really.
I think they are, they are in good shape there.
So I'm, what I'm going to say here is.
Yeah, that's great.
So use of bricks, blah, 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 blah is encouraged, encouraged with due consideration to long-term accessibility. Does that work for you, Cheryl?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
Just the landscape screening of parking when you get to it.
Okay, sounds good. So Cheryl had shared an example of a landscape section from Clarendon Hills, Illinois. Which I, do, what do you, I guess, what do you want to say about this, Cheryl?
Well, it, it just has some specificity and I don't know if, we, we were talking a lot about the, the diagram, I think if you go to the diagram like there, if you're, there's another, there's another diagram too. But it shows like you can have some screening of parking within a, a fairly narrow band, and this is towards the street. And there's another one, Dylan, another diagram that has, is a buffer area. No, was there, keep going down, I think there, where, let's say there's a building, like if you're doing this on the side, let's say, right, and you have an adjacent property next door perhaps, you know, having a buffer yard between your parking and the building next door was, I think, something, if you came in from the side, you know, rather, if you had a parking lot on the side of, of the building, that you would have, you can buffer that parking lot with a combination of fence and landscape material. That's what I was talking about last time. I didn't find a photograph of, of what I was remembering seeing, you know, in a sort of historic context. But here it does give some specifics. I don't know if we need to give the specifics, but we could say, you know, something about having a buffer. you know, something about having a buffer and that that buffer could contain a combination of fence and landscape material. Or we could be more specific like this, like this particular standard is.
Yeah, so, um, what interested me about this was that, you know, it's, it is much more designs, it's more design standards, it's mu- much, it's more specific. Um, and so I was asking you guys last time about where are dimensions, specific dimensions appropriate, and where do you want things more general?
Like I would say like a minimum of five feet, like so if we said we didn't want parking up against the property line, right? So if it were at the sidewalk side where some small portion, or if it were up against another parcel, then I would say that there needs to be, I think, a minimum of five feet. You know, um, maybe others think it needs to be more than that. If you go, if you go to this one, I think, um, the street one had a minimum of five. You scroll back up to the street buffer. Go a little bit up into the language of it, you might have to go up into.
Yeah, so I added some things similar to that, um, today. So it's this here, so there's a graphic showing and the height, and then it says buffer width, and it's three different settings, so front parking, five feet, service area, utility component, two feet, buffer adjacent to an existing one or two family use or aside rear parking. I put in five feet, it could be ten, whatever you want. Ten would be a lot, especially next to a one or two family house. Um, and then it has height minimum, so four feet for front parking, the full height of the element to be screened for utility element. Um, and five feet for parking adjacent to a one or two family use or the side or rear of parking.
I think that's good.
Okay. Um, there, you know, there were other, other things in that landscaping that we could add. Like sixty percent of the landscape area outside of shrub and tree masses must be planted and live ground cover perennials or mental grasses. I've written things similar to that before. I am a little bit more aggressive probably in requiring other plants other than grass.
I just wouldn't want to say all of it mulch.
Yeah, exactly.
It's something that's really large areas of mulch doesn't provide a landscape buffer.
Right, yeah, I mean, what I've written before is basically saying like, almost nothing can be just mulch.
Yeah.
Or grass. So if you guys, if you want more detail on that, we can add more detail on that. Do you all want more detail in the landscaping section about you know, specific dimensions and specific requirements?
On my behalf, I, I, I think I don't know that anymore necessarily than what you have.
I think it would be good to have some amount of ground cover other than mulch as a percentage.
What about ornament, ornamental grasses? Not just lawn, but like ornamental grasses? Maggie, you, you probably have better thoughts than even so.
Uh, yeah, there is something in there currently and, um.
Yeah, so mostly the question is always, what do you want it to look like in the winter?
That's exactly what I was thinking. Seasonally, an ornamental grass, what, what will we see?
Uh, yeah, so if you go by the entrance to Milton Hospital on, um, uh, twenty-eight, they have yet to cut down their big ornamental grass on either side of their sign. And it is not too attractive at the moment. So.
So.
Just say, what do you want it to look like in the winter? Um, do you want to see green or, um, no green?
My, my memory is super at this point, but I, I, I think that, um, a, a, at least in the spring and summertime, um, around the corner, the sort of the, the plantings that we have on Central Ave, um, in front of, in front of the plate and in front of, uh, the, uh, the liquor store and the coffee shop, I think look really, really nice, um, in terms of coverage and, and kind of, you know, the plantings that are there. Um, I can't remember what they looked like three months ago.
I think they're mostly roses. I think the original, they planted roses there.
Yeah. Um, but I, I, I think Maggie, I think Maggie's point is, is, is exactly right and to, to Cheryl's point, the one, the one concern that I would have when we talk about a percentage is ultimately, you know, we're going to be sending either me or the building inspector out to what, measure the area of, of mulch. I, I, I wouldn't need to want to go so specific as to have a number, but to have a sort of, you know, more kind of general language about a preponderance of coverage or a majority of coverage or, or something like that. Um, unless, I mean, look, happy to go out and measure, um, but it seems a little, a little onerous.
Yeah, I, I think Dylan, what you have in here is good, and the visual of the eighty-eight Wharf landscaping, which is so beautiful is, is great.
Okay. I'm just going to put in here something like, um.
Only thing is if your setback, your setback or buffer of two feet, that's not very, two feet's not a whole lot. Even four feet, most shrubs, you know, even a landscape rose can get up four to six feet wide.
Yep. Yeah, too, so it's a, yep, it's pretty minimal.
So really, you're only having not necessarily a landscape, it's really a straight line.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah, for a service area or utility components, you're talking about like a transformer or.
Yeah, but even a front parking of five feet, five feet's not a whole lot.
Think with five feet, you can do something significant. But, you know, it's, so there's the trade-off of like, how much space do you want designated to buffers and how much do you want?
Parking.
Parking, yeah, and utilize, and other, otherwise utilized space. So you can make this ten feet and then you've got you know, a pretty healthy diameter shrub and, uh, you know, two, two-foot diameter perennials and you've got ten feet.
One thing I would say, another thing that we could do is make a certain distance back if that parking is five, within five feet of the front, is, um, that that parking can't be asphalt, that it needs to be pavers to, to look more like a court. You know, like a car court or courtyard, so maybe concrete pavers. For a difference of like twenty feet at least, I don't know, twenty feet would be like two parking spaces a bit. You know, so i- i- it's not the black asphalt immediately next to that five feet.
You could also require a wall, which makes it quite sight impervious and not much space.
Like the library, the library did, has done a nice job in their parking. Um, you know, with their rain garden down the middle, that, I think that's really.
They, um, that, it is nicely done. One thing is it's not up against the sidewalk like that, like this, what we're talking about with the front yard one here. One thing I would say is, uh, I, you know, encouraging the use of the green infrastructure. I think I sent you a photo of something like that to Dylan.
Yeah.
We have sustainability, but you know, if you can use, um, your paved areas, collect water and drain them into your landscaping, like that's what the library does, but you can do it. I saw an example where you can do it at curbside too, which I thought was pretty interesting.
Yeah, so we've got a couple of photos in here, we've got more to add. Um, and I'm, uh, you had asked last time for like an LID, for some LID guidelines. And I've got some very robust LID guidelines that I can add here and you guys can see whether you like them. Um, there's another example in here of a, a stormwater planter. This one here in, in, um, Newport. So this is a stormwater planter in Newport. And then this is an example of a tree pit surfaced in permeable rubber. Um, so it's still ADA accessible, but it's permeable, so the tree's actually getting some, some water and some air. Alright, um, so front parking, I heard requiring pavers. What do you guys think of the, of requiring a wall? One thing I've written in the past is like you have a ten, requires a ten-foot buffer. But if you build a wall, it's reduced to five feet or six feet. So you build a, you know, maybe a four-foot wall, and then the buffer is reduced to six feet with, uh, landscaping on the front, on a sidewalk side of the wall.
So the wall could be nice only because then it acts as seating. But then you don't need a bunch of chairs out there for an ice cream shop or whatever.
A, a low wall, you're like an eighteen-inch wall?
Well, no, that's, as you get older, eighteen inches is far down. So maybe not quite that low.
So a leaning wall.
Yeah, yeah.
I think ten feet is too much, though. I, I don't think.
Yeah.
I, I would say, I mean, I wouldn't just necessarily discourage or encourage walls. You need a little bit more. Maggie, do you think six feet would do it over five feet?
Yeah, but, yeah, again, I don't, I, I think it really depends on, um.
I've seen five feet as common in other places, that's why, um, you know, I think I may have mentioned five last time, but, um, if you think six, but I don't, I think ten's too much, so.
Yes, yeah. Like how many feet can three, can three people sit on?
Well, like this six feet is like a buffer for, so if you're walking down the sidewalk, instead of seeing cars parked up next to the sidewalk, you would have the landscape buffer before you see the, the parked cars, right? So it's really, I think, um, I suppose you could have seating within the landscape buffer, there's no reason why not. Um, as long as you've had enough plant cover to, to screen. I think you probably still need a fence, if not a wall, even with five or six feet in landscaping, but um, I think the idea is we don't want to encourage too much of the street front to be parking, but acknowledge that we don't want a bunch of garage doors either, right? So it's like our um, I, I think if you said six feet and you do the first, uh, let's say eighteen feet, two, two nine-foot wide parking spaces, uh, have to be like a, a paver. And then the rest can be asphalt or something like that. Then it's, you're wa, when you're walking down the sidewalk, you're still getting a nice public realm.
Pavers, I managed to say pave three times in the same sentence. Something like that. Come back to that. So, when parking is located within ten feet of the sidewalk, the first eighteen feet of its surface shall be, um, so use block pavers or similar, whatever. Does that sound similar to what you want?
Yes, you can wordsmith it, yes.
Okay, sounds good. I will wordsmith it later. Alright, um, nine forty-two, so I'm gonna just go to the, I want to go to the beginning of this and show you what's in here and just make sure we're headed in the right direction with putting images in. Um, it sounds like so far you guys have been feeling positive about what's in there. Um, so in terms of diagrams, for the diagrams that wh- when we create diagrams, I think this sort of line style with a color calling out what it's indicating makes sense to me. Um, so here showing, just illustrating the building. Building should be built close to the front lot line. Here's an image showing the associate's building defining the street edge on Adam Street. Another illustration about you know, you can recess the corner of your building to create a nice plaza space. Talking about the web mill building and its curved corner, it's an attractive feature. Uh, one of the things that I think we probably do need a diagram for is, is this idea of how to work with the topography, um, to facilitate circulation with insights and connectivity between streets. Um, so the best image I could find from the area was this one, which is not great. Caption, I think, makes the point, but the image itself is hard to show, so. Basically making the point that this building at sixty-five to seventy-one Adam Street, um, has a connection to the upper story in the back, so that the lots are combined and actually, you're able to, to move from Adam Street to High Street on that lot if you have access to it. So I think we probably need to illustrate that. Um, this is a, an example we found from South Boston showing uh, contemporary building with historic buildings on either side. Um, showing the upper stories stepped back to approximately match the roof lines of the, um, adjacent historic structures. Um, and there's a note here that the building's taller than what's allowed in Milton Village. So there is no confusion. Um, this is responding to the design standard that new buildings should be positioned on their sites to provide horizontal setback buffers for existing historic single and two-family residents. Additionally, the building form massing a roofline shall provide a vertical step back to provide transitions and scale to those abiding structures. So example of that.
And you keep showing, if you don't mind me asking, the figure nine, like where, what, in the corner, what, where would that be used? What?
Which?
Now go up one page. Like right here, so what, if figure nine, where would that be used in Milton Village?
Uh, Canton Avenue?
It would be Adams and Ken, right, where the, uh, where the existing, um.
Yeah, or on the, or on the corner of, uh, it might be Wharf Street, where the hat factory is, if the hat, hat factory was to not be there anymore. There's another.
Yeah, so that would be the, so that was my fear, like, I understand if it was on Ken and Adams. But on Wharf, you know, there's that green space. You know, so, I mean, my hopes would be it would stay green space.
Yeah, that's town-owned green space. Yeah, that couldn't change.
Yeah, okay. So really, this would only sort of be just visually Adda, uh, Adams and Ken now.
Yeah, yeah, well, and then also the corner of High and Elliot's.
Okay.
There's something was to happen there possibly, although the grid is pretty tricky there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ideas in here and it's a very small district, right? So, some of these ideas may only apply to just one property, like this idea here of development adjacent to historic single or two-family structures. You're probably only talking about a handful of properties. Okay, here's that, the building that was popular in the, in the forum, mentioning it's a contemporary building, but builds from his historic architectural styles and massing materials, glazing, detailing.
Yeah, so that black may very well be metal.
Yeah, I would assume it is. An example of simple building forms resulting in a place that looks like it's been built over time, when it actually hasn't. An example of a building that uses the slope, transitioning from four stories lower on the slope to three stories above, and also uses the slope to get parking on the ground floor. An illustration showing upper story step backs. Cheryl's example of an upper story setback, another example of an upper story setback from Brookline. This one actually has two step backs, one at the first floor and then one at the top of, above the fourth floor, responding to both the adjacent commercial and the residential neighborhood around it. We looked at roofs before. This is the illustration showing firms.
Yeah.
That might come up. Then there's this, the design standard I was talking about earlier about buildings more than 40 feet need to be broken up into smaller parts. So there's some, you know, an actual historic place with small buildings, showing how you can tell each of those buildings is unique because of the way the storefront is treated and the subtle variations in colors. And then an example from Cincinnati, where they did the kind of thing you're talking about without the front, the actual amassing change for the most part, but just the materials and fenestration and roof lines. And then.
That, that's my least favorite treatment, but mine too.
Do you want to, do you want to cut it or call it inappropriate?
No, I called it inappropriate because I like to think of the material change in conjunction with the mastic change.
Yeah.
They go hand in hand rather than in substitute. Even if it's a subtle one, I mean, it doesn't have to be five feet, for example.
All right. Here's one from WallPam, very large building that, that does use the kinds of things you talk about with changes of horizontal setbacks and projections and material changes. An example from Northampton of vertical and horizontal sections in recognizable proportion of the building. And also, you know, some markup on a, on a photo showing the idea of a base, a body and a cap in a building. And we have a diagram showing facade bay configurations of sort of equal bays, the emphasis on the central bay or emphasis on the ends of bays. And then example of how you can treat a corner, corners are important in certain historic styles. Entrances, examples of entrances, we saw those before. More entrances, this year addresses the ramp issue. I haven't revised the text for the ramp section, but actually I did revise the section, but not, I revised it elsewhere, but not here. And so this 36 Central, I think is a really good example of the grade changes along the facade of that building. And so this, this sort of porch-like structure on the ground floor has a sloped pathway that's, you know, it's less than an accessible ramp, so it's more accessible than a ramp would be and it enables people to access the full front facade. When you get to the other ends, the height difference is enough that you'd probably need a ramp if you didn't have this raised porch-like thing in front of the building. And then an inappropriate example from down the street from where I'm sitting now, where a handicap ramp was put in as an afterthought because the building's elevation was set to match the parking lot in the back, not sidewalk in the front. And so you end up with this sort of appendage, which is narrowing the sidewalk and in the winter this fills up with snow and nobody can get by the ramp. Then some window examples. This one talking about how even if you have a nice storefront, if you cover it up with advertisement, you can't see in the building and so it's not really fulfilling the goal of the storefront. So I think that gives you a taste of where we're headed. And I'm just wondering if it seems like we're headed in the right direction with the images.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so also. There's, there's a lot there.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right, so we are gonna can, I'll tell you what our plan is and then if you guys have any final questions before 10, I'm happy to hear them. Our plan is to continue to add images and to make all the text changes we've discussed. I'm hoping to get that done by the end of next week. That's, and I can't promise it will be done by the end of next week, but my hope is to have it by the end of next week.
So maybe Dylan, if you, if you were finished with a portion of it, we could review it into pieces.
That's a great idea.
We have enough time, you know, for a good final review.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, and I've, I've been working from front to back, so mostly. So I could send you the first section, the first sections to review.
Does anyone from the public have any questions? Any residents who are on the call? Feel free to raise your hand and if you have any questions for Dylan. Not seeing any hands yet, but you're welcome to ask anything, so. All right. Let's see, no, still no hands, so. Anybody else see any that I'm not? And anyone from the board, any other questions that you all might have?
I mean, I guess maybe it's just because I'm new and have the property owners ever gotten together with like members of the boards or residents of the neighborhood, you know, informally to discuss kind of what's going on or not going on or if the standards or guidelines are adopted, how quickly do we anticipate someone taking advantage of it? Or is that too premature to talk?
We do have an applicant, we have Josh Wild, the developer who's looking at doing the mill buildings. The, what is it? The web bill, web bill building, yes. So he's already applied for a liquor license and I think hopefully moving forward.
One thing I'll say, Maggie, when the master plan implementation committee was first working on the zoning, Tim's predecessor, Bill, reached out to all of the property owners that he could, that he had, he could find contact information for it. And it was, actually JD bought the buildings there right when the zoning was coming, getting ready to go to town meeting and he spoke in favor of the zoning. He was, you know, interested in the mixed-use concept and he thought it would be, it, it was actually one of the reasons why he chose to buy the buildings was, was the overlay. So, and then Mike Roberts, who owns the Swift Hat Building, also spoke in support. They were both participants in the webinar that the planning board did, you know, prior to town meeting. And he too was interested in the mixed-use and was, he participated a number of times because he's owned that property for some time. So he participated in a number of meetings. Others were invited, but they didn't participate the same level. The Ferruccis, before they sold, you know, that was an inheritance, you know, with the death of a, of the father. And one of the siblings participated in a couple of meetings, also spoke in favor of it. Those are the ones I can think of offhand. There may have been others who spoke as well. Verizon was impossible to get a hold of.
And we have Tim Howey, who's with us tonight, would like to speak, Tim. Can you? Um, Tim, you're muted?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm new to all of this here and I, I live in 43 Randolph and I'm right up the street from the corner of the old funeral home. When we're talking about the, what exact area are we talking about? Are we talking about demolition of existing buildings? Are we? I see that there's 53 units going in into the T parking lot. That, has that been approved already?
No.
No, that is, so this is all still open for discussion.
Yes, we, we actually did the overlay zoning, Tim, which we have, we have actually preservation, we have incentives for historic preservation down in that area.
Are they talking about demolition of any existing buildings now?
No. This is for, well, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. This, there could be buildings that, that may be taken down, it would most likely be, you know, not historic buildings or places that they are, you know, they're currently are not buildings. And, but this is also for the restoration and of, of current existing buildings, because a lot of those old mill buildings can be used now for residential above and commercial below, so mixed use.
Okay, all right.
Our goal is to preserve as many of them as possible.
Of what exactly? I was just looking at some things and I saw the 53 units going into the T parking lot and, I don't, I wasn't sure if it was just plants, just start popping up apartment buildings all over Milton Village. I apologize, I'm not very informed on this right now. This is kind of my first dip into this pool here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Tim, if, if, if you want to, if you want to go back, the, the overlay zoning was approved in the July 2020 town meeting. So if you wanted to go back and check that, that warrant or in the town report on the town website, you can get that zoning language and kind of see exactly what it's proposing. Meredith did, did a, a pretty good job of explaining kind of what we're after. But it's basically, we have basic kind of business district zoning in Milton Village. And, you know, the thinking is in order to get the type of development that kind of we need to achieve our housing and economic development and historic preservation goals, that we need to make a change in the zoning to kind of encourage, you know, the, the type of, you know, appropriate contextual kind of transit-oriented development, you know, kind of as, as kind of other side of the coin of lower mills. But I, I think if you, if you take a look at that zoning yourself, you know, if you've got any questions, my office is happy to answer any questions that you've got. But I think what we're looking at is, you know, as Meredith explained, you know, there are incentives for preservation, but also there are, there are elements of the, that, you know, could use some, some sprucing up and we're hoping that the overlay, you know, allows for that. But I don't think we're talking about, you know, huge kind of 40B-style type developments. I don't think this opening would, would really kind of facilitate that sort of thing. You know, if that's, if that's a concern in terms of the size and kind of the density of these projects.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm trying to just get more informed. I'll look over Meredith's 2020 thing. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, anyone else?
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if Tim's still there or not, but I think the applicability of what is being created for guidelines only occurs if a building owner that owns property down there decides to redevelop it or if a building owner sells and whomever purchased it tries to redevelop it. You know, I, I'm not sure that, you know, for the benefit of Tim, if he's still there, this, this is, this is only applicable should one of those two scenarios take place. There's, there is no development plan, right, for Milton Village and I wonder if people who are watching this might think that there is.
Yeah, one thing I would just add is that we tested the parameters that control how much you can build so that there would be no financial incentive to tear down a historic property, to build something which is less square footage or the same square footage is what you could build under the new zoning. So, and we gave incentives, sort of reasons to preserve those buildings and be able to, for example, the associates' building, I think it is, at the, at the intersection of Wharf and Adams. The, there's no elevator in that building, so it's not handicapped accessible. And you can only do a certain amount of work to your building before the building codes trigger it to be made handicapped accessible. And so once you make it fully accessible, you're investing a certain amount of money in it. And it gives property owners another opportunity rather than just a business use in that building. Now they can have a business use on the ground floor and residential uses above. So it gives them more opportunity to be able to maintain the building. You know, keep the historic building because now they have more use options for it. So that's some of the thinking behind it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, if not, we are at the end of our agenda, so we can make a motion to adjourn if anybody would like. And Dylan, thank you so much. Again, I really have to say thank you. You're doing just fantastic work, so we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Meredith, I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second, I'll, in favor, Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening.
Night, everyone.
Thank you, Dylan. All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Bye-bye.